Show six o'clock, Mayor.
Yep. Could I have everybody take their seat? We're going to go ahead and get started at six o'clock. I brought my book, by the way. No, no worries. If you have two minutes afterwards, that'll work. Okay. Bill, have you started the recording?
Yes, I have.
Okay, thank you. All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Julia Johnson. I'm Mayor of Seidere Wully, and I am calling this Seidere Wully City Council to order. So if you will all stand with me to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I am going to do roll call, and I will begin with Chuck Owen.
Present.
I should say, I should have said Commissioner, or Councilman Owen, sorry about that. Councilman McGoffin?
Present.
Councilwoman Diamond?
Present.
Councilwoman Burns?
Present.
Councilman Allen?
Present.
Councilwoman Kestie?
Present.
And Councilman Lavaca asked that he be excused tonight, so I am looking for a motion to excuse him from the meeting tonight.
I'll make a motion to excuse Councilman Lavaca.
I'll second that.
All right, thank you. We have a motion by Council. We have a motion by Councilman Burns and seconded by Councilwoman Diamond. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
And we will move on. Was that opposing, or were you for, Joellen? I'm sorry.
I'm good, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, moving on to the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the agenda.
Thank you. Do I have a second? All right, thank you. So I have a motion by Councilman McGoffin, seconded by Councilman Owen. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, the consent agenda, items one through six. I am looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you.
I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilwoman Burns, seconded by Councilman Allen, to approve the consent agenda, items one through six. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Perfect, okay. Well, tonight, we have a special guest. Tonight, we have Helping Hands Food Bank Director, Executive Director, actually, Becky Scrandy here with her staff. And so Becky, if you want to come forward, and I don't know if your staff is coming up with you, or...
They're the most, besides me, they're the most introverted staff I have.
Okay, well, welcome. Welcome to the council meeting.
I do have my operations manager and my new engagement manager on Zoo as well.
Excellent.
So what am I looking at for our presentation? Could you turn your mic on? Or you just push the little button?
It's blue?
So where is my presentation going to pop up on?
It should pop up right here on the screen, where you see Bill.
Because I kind of have to look at it.
Okay, that's fine.
So thanks for having us today. Behind me is my marketing manager, Amanda, and then my deputy director, my number two, that's Rick Bailey. So today, we're going to kind of talk about a little bit, about a little bit of data, but also kind of the exciting stuff that we're doing that's new. I know a lot of people like to know who we served and how we served, and how many we served, but we always serve a lot of people. And I figure that it's more exciting to talk about the great things that we're going to be doing, and where our community can support us down the road. So if you haven't been there, Joe, I don't know if you've ever been there, I would love to give anybody a tour that wants to come out to the building. So if you guys want to email me, RebeccaS@helpinghandsfoodbank.org, I'd love to give you a tour of the facility, and kind of talk to you and show you the magic that's in that building. It's really amazing. I know I'm seeing you guys on Thursday to give a tour.
Could anybody join us if they wanted to?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I think it's at 1:30?
It is at 1:30. We're meeting at the food bank.
On Thursday. So if you want to stop by, I'd love to show you our work-study program, folks, and just the volunteers and our new staff that we have. So here's the facility. We've been there now for four years. We outgrew it in the first month that we moved in four years ago, but we're also expanding our services upriver into Anacortes. So that's helped kind of grow this facility into a max-capacity type building. We grew it, we were going to build it to be as big as possible forever, and then COVID hit, and we had a million pounds of food in there. So it got big really, really fast. But it's a beautiful building. So next. So our impact. So these are some of those figures that are pretty outstanding. When we were building this facility, one of the Janikys asked, you know, why don't we just give you a building, and you guys can serve out of a building? And I said, well, what's better would be a solution center that not only was able to be a distribution center, an education center, a job training center, but we could also serve out of this facility. And so that great support that we had, we were able to build this facility. So in 2021, we put out more than, close to five million pounds of food. Now during COVID, we've put out 15 million pounds of food total in the last two years. If you want to know what a million pounds of food looks like, come to the building, and I'll definitely show you. We don't have a million right now, but I can show you how we stack a million pounds of food into a facility. That equals about 5.6 or 5.7 million meals that went out to this community. We serve anybody that comes to any distribution, so we have a lot of folks that come from Watcom County, Island County, and Snohomish County, because a lot of those counties have residency requirements, and so they may not serve everybody that comes to their door. So we never turn anybody away. So the IRS values that food at close to $8 million dollars. So part of the impact at Helping Hands is, is how large and stable we are financially. Our volunteer hours for 2021 was close to 97,000 hours. That included the National Guard time, the work-study programs, folks, anybody that we're not paying that serves in the facility or outside to any of our mission is part of our volunteer hours. That equals 47 full-time employees to do that amount of work. That's valued at $1.6 million to the IRS. We would have to spend $1.6 million to do all this work if we didn't have those amazing volunteers. So our value of our assets are almost $2.2 million. I think it's important to share this information with you guys, to see the impact that Helping Hands has is not just handing out dented cans of food, but it's really, we're making an economic impact into this community. The families we served, we served 164,000 families. We gave out 280,000 meals to our children through our cutting hunger on the weekend. And we do that in every town that we serve, so it's not just Seidere Wully, it's everybody. Anybody can sign up. And we handed out 91,000, we delivered 91,000 boxes of groceries, meals, sorry, in our boxes of groceries that are going to our seniors, our disabled, COVID-positive families last year. Can you do the next slide, please? So some of our highlights, we were able to pay off the loan on the building nine months early. That's great, wonderful, so we own it free and clear. The work-study program, folks, that we're going to be talking about in a bit, we brought in $300,000 worth of salaries for those staff. That is federal and state funding that wouldn't have come to Skagit County. So that, to me, as a person that's trying to, or Helping Hands is trying to get people out of the food bank system, that's an amazing thing that we were able to accomplish. COVID brought grant money that we were able to buy new equipment to replace the stuff that was way beyond its lifespan. And we still stayed under 2% of government funding for 2021. And we're very proud of that, that the community, this community supports Helping Hands in a way that will always be stable and allow us to be resilient. Some of the new programs we started, by the way, if you can kind of see the line of cars, that was the road that you guys approved, so that we could do this setup for the outside delivery system. We started non-food distribution. It started with Rick asking the question of, what are we doing with all this stuff? And it's piling up during COVID. And so we decided to do one non-food distribution to kind of clean out the warehouse of laundry and deodorant, laundry soap, and shampoo, and all those things. Well, unbeknownst to us, there is a pilot program called Essentials First that we volunteered for. And we're the largest food bank in Washington that are applied to be in this program, and there's four of us in the program. And what the idea is that they're not just sending us food, but they're sending us the non-food items, so that the items that people can't buy through SNAP and food stamps, and there's not a lot of programs that you can find shampoo, feminine products. You can find diapers and formula, but not those other hygiene products. So we're kind of on, now that we're part of this pilot program, we have the Congresswoman Susan Delbenny interested in how this is all going to work, and looking for grants to really focus on putting the advocacy out there that people need these. And I have amazing stories that I'll tell you when we're doing the tour, but not necessarily in public, but some real needs that people have in this community for hygiene products. Next. So our workforce, job training, folks. We have 20 staff members, two different grants. One is from the Department of Commerce, and one is a federal grant that puts people to work. The first group, we're all unemployed during COVID, and the other 10 were meant to replace the National Guard. And eight of them were actually, are from that National Guard that just switched over into these positions. These folks are getting job training, labor unions. They talked to a labor union last week, because the idea is, once they're done, we're going to place them in jobs that they want to do and get training. And we're going to probably hire one or two, if not more, don't tell them yet. But the idea is to really take them and support them through this kind of transition period of time. One of them has already gone into the union. He left us early. But this is something I'm really passionate about, and we are passionate about, is solving grassroots reasons of why people come to the food bank. And if they're underskilled, helping them get this reskilling of the jobs that can actually pay a livable wage. So this is kind of my thing that I've always loved doing. If you didn't know this, Marble Mount, Anacortes, and Hamilton are now part of the Helping Hands family. Marble Mount, right before COVID-ish, so I'm losing track of, it's been 10 years, it feels like. And Hamilton's the recent addition to the family, and they are under us 100%. So all of three of them had different reasons why they needed to change ownership, I guess. But it's been an amazing experience to help the folks of Marble Mount and Hamilton and Anacortes so far. And we have great plans, working on what is Helping Hands look like in each one of those cities. And there is potential for, in the long run, to maybe make a stronger emergency food system here in Skagit County that supported all of us a little bit stronger. COVID has really opened people's eyes to, food banks are essential and not just a charity that does good things once in a while. So that's been a really great experience to be on the front end of that, really showing people in the community how important food banks are. Next, please. So Sarah was just talking about volunteer opportunities. So we're opening, we all know the masks are coming down, so we're trying to figure out how to bring more people in to support our volunteers. As you can see, it's very important to have lots and lots of volunteers, so we can get all this amazing work done. And so if you're interested in volunteering, or know people who are, or in a group that wants to, please contact Erica, E-R-I-C-A, at HelpingHandsFoodBank.org, or go online. We have a volunteer application online as well. And there's a lot of different opportunities from our navigation team, or solutions team, that works with the individuals to help them get out of the system of food banks, and to distribution, to grocery rescue. We even probably could have a volunteer working in marketing and social media if that was their passion. So our volunteers are our heart and soul, and we can only do it with them. And so if anybody wants or knows people that want to support the food bank, please send them our way. Next. So what's next? Our solutions team. So they're working on the root causes, like I said, of why people come to the food bank. And there's like 100,000 of them. So if we have 164,000 families, there's 164,000 reasons why people come. And that's ran by Miranda, our programs manager, and her team. And the goal is to, we have to get big to get small. We have to get big enough so all the people who need food are supported and stable, and then we can start working on those solutions to their needs. Our engagement team, it's kind of like our development team. Our folks are going to start engaging with the community and mobilizing the community to become part of the system itself, so that they speak nicely about us when they're at meetings, which I know you do all the time, Julia. And there's an engagement that everybody should be supporting to make this system stronger, so we can really solve it and someday make it smaller. Our volunteers, with our hiring of our volunteer manager, to really focus on the needs and how people can help on our growth, as we grow into Anacortes. And if there's any other needs of where we need to grow, there's some strategy behind that. And also how we build on these programs for the work-study programs as COVID leaves, how do we continue to do that? There's plenty of people that need upscaling and reskilling to get better jobs, and how we can continue that. And our main goal is to work towards a resilient community. COVID has taught everybody that word. Everybody used to want to stabilize communities, and now it's being resilient. So if anything ever happens again, we can stand on our own two feet. So we want to be part of that. And I just wanted to say thank you, and if you guys had any questions for me.
Are there any questions for Becky?
Becky, I was just going to ask you, you said you were able to replace a lot of equipment. When you moved out there, did you take a lot of old equipment with you?
Yeah, we've actually replaced two trucks, a van, and a forklift, and almost all of our pallet jacks since we moved. I had a donor teach me that it's better to ask for new, so it can be stronger and provide more food. And ever since that, we want to make sure our fleet is strong, so that we can move 15 million pounds. And everything was breaking down quickly once COVID hit. And the county gave us some of their COVID funds to buy, sorry. We were talking too much today. They gave us, we could replace concrete's van, and then our forklift. Sorry.
It's okay. I just had a question regarding Stuff the Bus. How well did that go? Because I thought that was pretty amazing. What kind of a turnout did you have regarding that? And then also, there are, especially at the former library building, the former library building, it's like a food bank, and I know that that was actually developed and put up by Leadership Skagit, which we really supported. We supported that idea. But I am wondering, is it Helping Hands that actually helps put the, okay.
You want to talk about the pantries?
Sure, I'd love to talk about the pantries. So that was a thing that Miranda, our programs manager, she was part of that Leadership Skagit class, and that was their project, was to put some of these food pantries within the different communities. And so we do have two of them put up, one in Burlington and the one in Seidere Wully. And we're restocking those probably twice a week right now, the demand is really high. And we've actually started putting non-food items in there as well to help support that process.
Oh, nice, okay.
It's a very successful program. We still have goals for at least two or three more of those to be mounted in Mount Vernon, one in Mount Vernon. And I can't remember where the other one is.
On the Swenomish, or, yeah, Swenomish?
Yeah, Snohomish, so, yeah. So we're looking to expand that program as well.
They're very nice. They're heavy-duty, they're well-made. It's a very nice...
The building, yeah.
Yeah.
They were designed, they were designed, on our main building, we have a library. You ever seen those, you know, the library boxes you can, some people have in their yards, you can go and swap books out. We have one of those in front of our building, and mirrored these pantries to match that.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, so it's pretty cool.
And then Stuff the Bus, how'd that go?
That was amazing. You have the numbers. I'm not sure the numbers, but was it 100?
So we, there, we collected about 11,000 pounds of food. But with the money that we received, we can buy food at a dollar, for a dollar, 25 pounds of food. So with the money, we were able to, we will be able to buy about 325,000 pounds of food. It was just kind of really fun to watch how a community rallied around something that was kind of a tragedy. And the energy was great, and we had tons of volunteers from labor unions to...
Real estate.
Real estate, to rotaries. Our rotary was there. And so it was just kind of really beautiful to watch. And Ryan's parents were there, and so it was just kind of, just great. It was great to watch. And they're going to be feeding a lot of people.
A lot of people, yeah.
I have to say, you guys do an amazing job, and the community is greatly impacted and supported by what you do. I also want to thank you, because just recently, I did put you in touch with the Disaster Assistance Program, and they looked for somebody to coordinate. You came immediately to mind. And I wasn't surprised when you picked up the ball and you ran with it, Rebecca. I am just, it's so cool that you guys have done that.
Well, it's a passion of mine and ours to be ready for the next disaster. That's what COVID kind of taught us where our gaps were. And I feel like this is a community-driven organization, and they deserve somebody thinking about how they're going to get fed and water and hygiene products during an emergency. And we've taken that on, and we actually like doing that. There's stuff I don't like to do, like filing, but I do like to talk about emergency preparedness, so. We appreciate the support. It's amazing when I talk to other food banks that do not have any, they actually fight with their city councils and mayors, and I'm like, I couldn't imagine doing the heavy load that we do without your guys' support and always good words that you guys speak about us. So thank you for that.
Well, thank you. And before you go, any last question? Yes, yes.
Thank you for the presentation. I just had a couple quick questions. Have you guys experienced any food shortages with supply? If so, what have you guys done to kind of counter that?
So one of the things that we've been doing is, we have a level that we want to keep at. And so we've been, the free food that we get from our food partners, we try to keep it at that level, so that we don't have this urgency to go buy something off the grocery floor. What we have noticed is they have less and less options for us to get. It's like their warehouses are running out. And so we talked about what happens when we get to that point that they can't afford the food that they're sending to the food. They have 250 food banks that they serve. What happens when they struggle finding food? So we have good connections with, like, US Foods. We do have an emergency fund set aside, you know, money-wise. But really, our goal was never to take it out of the grocery stores. It's to take it out of the warehouses that normal people can't go find. And so that's what we try to do, is just have those partnerships. I have seen less coming out of the grocery stores, just like pre-COVID. People are buying a bunch now, because it's cheaper right now than it will be next week. But our biggest concern is the cost of living, gas. Food prices have gone up 30% since December, with, we have a, one of the spouses in our group works at a grocery store, and what's coming is really scary. So part of marketing is talking about making sure people understand how to get our services if they've never needed our services. So, and we know there's going to be a wave of people that never maybe needed it, but they can't afford $5 a gallon for gas. So we try to build relationships around people that know where that food is, and we keep them close, and we forecast what's coming next.
And we've been very fortunate. We've never turned anybody away. Anybody, like she said earlier, we are open to anybody. No questions asked. If you need food, we're going to provide you with what we can. And we've been very fortunate that we've never had to turn anybody away.
The greatest part of this is during COVID, when our shelves were empty, we had money. We just couldn't find the food. So now we built those relationships, and we know that if that crisis ever came, the community would support us through their funding. And now that we have those relationships, it'll be easier to, like, connect them. So I'm not going to say we have been hoarding food, but we definitely have a layer, level of what we need and what we're going to keep it at, so we don't have a crisis.
Awesome, thank you. My other question was, is there anything the council could do to help you out more that you're looking for support in?
I think just getting involved. I know Julia's volunteered. You were on the first day of the first box that went out during COVID. Being connected with us, and when you do do, when we're making, like, decisions for the community, and you're thinking about how is that going to affect people, use us as a tool to say, these are the kinds of people that really need our support, that would be affected. And if you ever have that question about who's going to get affected, you know, if the people with that lower income or that needs, or in there in that kind of, you know, use us. Because we love to talk to our participants about what your city can do for you, and, yeah. Get to know us.
Okay, I'll swing by. Yeah, I want to see it for sure.
Okay, one last question, Becky, from me. How much support do you get from local farmers during their seasonal output?
We used, pre-COVID, we used to get a lot. We are working on bringing that back. The distribution center focuses a lot on recovering a lot of that food from the farmers. Sarah calls me and says, anytime you need potatoes, call. And she does an amazing job of connecting us with her work and making sure we always have potatoes. So it's definitely lacked since COVID started, but we've always been very strong with our farmers, and they're very supportive with what we do. And that's part of our, making sure the food is just not in quality but quantity, and getting that fresh produce to the people. And I like spending our money. When we get FEMA money, I always go to a small farmer and say, hey, here's some money. And I like spending our money. When we get FEMA money, I always go to a small farmer and say, hey, here's some money. Can I get some stuff? Because I feel like that's a great way for Helping Hands to support the local community is through those kind of federal and state funding that would never end up in Skagit County. We try to be thoughtful.
And you are.
I try to be. Thank you guys for having us.
Thank you very much for coming. It's always great to have you here. Thank you for what you're doing. Yeah. I almost feel like I should applaud.
No, don't.
All right, moving on to staff reports. And I will begin with Chief Wagner.
Good evening, Councilwoman Mayor. Uh, this evening, I just want to report back. Myself and Glenn went down to Chehalis last week to do our pre-build meeting for the ambulances that we ordered on our ER and R, uh, uh, funding deal back in November. We were anticipating or hoping to receive those sometime in July or August. But, uh, we got the, the news that we kind of anticipated that due to the supply shortages with chassis and, uh, and vehicles in the, the nation right now, we probably will not see those until January or February of next year, it's looking. But other than that, the, the meeting went well. Uh, we got the changes and stuff we needed and made sure our build is, is on track. They're looking at possibly building the, the box and stuff for us in advance. So we don't know if that chassis, our chassis come in, that they can streamline that process and hopefully get us moving faster than, than what we're expecting right now. Staffing, we're continuing to have, uh, the issues we've been having for months and months. It's, uh, uh, some good news. We have three of our folks that have accepted other job offers. So good news for them, not good for our staffing issues. But, uh, again, we have another individual that just accepted a, an offer this week to South Watcomb Fire as a career firefighter. So she's going to do amazing things up there. Another one that took, uh, an offer at Tulalip, uh, down in Marysville for their new fire service that they started here a couple of years ago. And, uh, Mr. Coughill is the third one that will be starting in Hanford, uh, May 1st. So, uh, some good news for those folks, but kind of hinders, uh, our process of, of retaining and, and bringing on new folks. So our academy is going well with the, the four new ones that we have, uh, onboard. But they're going to be June or July. Like Director Scrindi said, the supply and demand right now is, we're anticipating or being told by distributors that some of our items normally go up in, in April or May anyway. But we're looking at some increases or being told probably 6% on the low end and 40 to 50% on the higher end on some of the items. So Glenn is working diligently to get together some items that are on our consumables list that we can pre-buy that we know we're going to use throughout the year to save us some, some funds and budget, uh, through, uh, distribution. And luckily with 2.75, we're calling it up at Station 2 that we'll have a place to, to, uh, store that stuff out of the way that we can continue to use and, and, uh, capture some of the, those savings. So. And that's all I have right now. Unless you have some questions?
Does anybody have any questions for Chief? A COVID report? You usually give us a COVID report.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, so the good news, as everybody I'm sure has heard, is, uh, Friday night at midnight, uh, the mask mandates, uh, will come down. So that is great news. Uh, we're hoping to get back into, uh, the schools. Uh, our folks are looking forward, we have an agreement with the school district where the firefighters and police officers can go in and have lunch with the kids at the different schools. So we'll be back on the schedule there. Um, we're, uh, hoping, uh, we're kind of waiting on some feedback back from, uh, the, uh, Department of Health on, uh, the fire department being a healthcare setting and hopefully being allowed to drop the masks in the rigs and, and only, uh, having to use the N95s and stuff in, uh, when we have a patient. So that will be a huge benefit to the staff. And we can kind of get back to some normalcy. Numbers are continuing to decline. Our, uh, numbers, uh, this last week are, are down as far as new cases, uh, new hospitalizations. And I think unfortunately, we did have one death, but even that number as far as the, the mortality rate is down. So everything's starting to look better on the, the horizon.
Excellent. Thank you.
You bet.
Chief Tucker.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just a couple of things. Um, continuing with the trend of things cost a whole lot more, and they're going to cost a whole lot more. We were looking at fuel prices last year, and they went through the roof for us, just like everybody else. We were at 25 to 30% over our budgeted amount for fuel last year. And that was without $4, $5 and $6 a gallon fuel. That was at, what, $3.5 to $3.70 something a gallon fuel. So, um, we had increased our, um, budgeted amount for fuel for this year. But there's absolutely no way of seeing where that's going to go or how we're going to get there. But, uh, so we're keeping an eye on it, but not much we can do. Um, there's a, it'd be a heck of a lot of walking, uh, to do, uh, in town if we get, uh, having to shag calls on foot. But, uh, we're going to do the best we can. Um, and the other thing is a little bit better news. The Boys and Girls Club is going to be doing their fundraising breakfast next week. They got ahold of me here, uh, last month, I think, to try to set up a thing to help them do their fundraising. This, this time I got away without having to shave my mustache. That happened at a previous fundraising thing. But, uh, they did a Family Feud type, uh, game with, uh, some of the, uh, directors and workers from the different clubs around the, the county. And we had a really good time. We filmed it, and they're going to play that film, uh, or play that video for the fundraiser. It's all going to be online next week. As soon as we get the link to it, we'll put it up on our Facebook page. And a couple of selfies of me and the crew, uh, hamming up for the camera. Had a great time. And for those of you that haven't spent much time with anybody at the Boys and Girls Club, you should. Because they're another gem that, um, you know, uh, we couldn't really do without. So. And Mayor, that's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Are there any questions for the Chief? Okay, thank you. Um, Financial Director Debbie Burton.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Um, I just have a couple of items. Uh, just want to confirm for you that the Salary Commission's organizational meeting has been set. It's going to be held on March 29th, um, at 5:30 PM here in City Council chambers. Um, and then also, um, kind of dovetailing on Boys and Girls Club, I have finalized the sub-recipient contracts with our city attorney's assistance. And so next council meeting, you will see on your agenda two contracts, uh, two contracts going to those agencies for, um, outdoor summer camps. So one for the Boys and Girls Club and one for the YMCA. So really exciting. Um, it's going to be a very active summer here for our youth. And so I'm excited about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie, for, because you put those grants together. You filled out all the grants. Thank you for doing that and making that happen. It's wonderful for the city, and it's especially wonderful for the, for the community. So thank you. Are there any questions for Debbie? All right, thank you. Um, well, go to you, Charlie.
Well, I mentioned the last time, the, uh, request for proposal for the classification and compensation study for our AFSMI employees and our non-represented employees was being drafted. It's now out. Uh, and it closes on the 21st of March. So after that, we'll be selecting a firm and bringing a contract to the council to get that started. That's a critical, uh, exercise for us this year, in making sure that we're competitive in how we pay our employees. The Finance Director recruitment continues, and we have one week from Friday, uh, until our first review. The first review will be on the 18th. Uh, so we're still looking for more applicants. So if you know anybody, please spread the word. Appreciate some of you, uh, doing that already. Thank you. Working on, uh, an agreement, a rental agreement with YMCA, uh, to use our old library. Uh, this has been under discussion for the last few years. And, uh, it's an opportunity to, to use the library as a youth drop-in center and also for the activities that Debbie just mentioned, uh, with the grant. Uh, so we're really excited to get that going. And we'll have a lot more detail for you shortly. Working more closely with the Finance Department. Uh, Debbie's mostly remote at this point. So I'm, uh, stepping in there to help out and, and make sure that, uh, I'm a presence in that department. So, uh, definitely spreading my wings here at the city. And I'm also continuing one-on-one meetings with all the staff. That was one of my goals when I got here. That's something I've done in other places. Uh, so I've worked my way through the directors and now working my way through finance now, and then I'll be working through the other departments. So got a little slowed up by COVID and some other things, but I'm, I'm back on it. So wanted to mention that to you. I could mention it every single meeting until the end of the year, because it'll take that long, but I'm not going to. So at least you know I'm doing it. Uh, and then next week, Tuesday through Friday, I'm going to be, uh, presenting at the ICMA West Coast Regional Summit, which is down in Stevenson, Washington. And I'm presenting in a session called Leading During Challenging Times. I won't be necessarily talking a lot about Cedar Woolley, but I look forward to representing the city there. And that concludes my report.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions for Charlie? Thank you, Charlie. Um, we'll move on to you, Bill Chambers.
Just, uh, we completed the, uh, SIMS Cemetery Information Management System training, uh, in finance. And, uh, continuing with DocuWare and GovQA coaching and refresher training for staff. Uh, finished implementation of, uh, the archiving of Microsoft Teams on our Smarsh platform. Woody is continuing to find creative ways to tweak our, our spam and phishing filtering to block any potential malware. We're also updating our, uh, network, uh, device firmware, uh, software and security updates. Working with the social media team to, uh, transition our city scene from, uh, magazine format to social media, uh, presentation format. Uh, we found that that gets a lot more readership that way. And, um, and continuing to update the IT department policies.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions for Bill? All right, hearing none. Thank you, Bill. Um, Mark Freyberger.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Uh, just a few things. I have a larger item later on I'll talk about on Duke's Hill. Uh, but the construction project at the wastewater and the public works facility is moving ahead well. Um, the Public Works Building has been pretty well framed, and they are planning to set trusses tomorrow on that. So they'll start, uh, getting that one, uh, roofed and dried in within the next 30 days. Uh, the other one is all ready, uh, to, uh, dried in stage, uh, the wastewater building. And, uh, they're pulling electrical and HPAC and plumbing in there as we speak. Projects on, on track to complete in, uh, mid-September. And, uh, moving along well, I would say. Uh, our contractor is preparing for the intersection rebuild at 20 and 9. Uh, we're still expecting that will start, uh, the last week of September and finish, uh, in, uh, October on that one. That moved ahead okay. Uh, design work that's going on, uh, we've reviewed the 100% plans for the Homestead Park project. And, uh, we are still working on getting the final environmental permits in place. Don't know exactly if those are going to come in in time to get that advertised this spring or not, but we're still hoping to do that. And, uh, we're getting ready to kick off, uh, the design for the memorial park improvements. On that note, uh, you'll be seeing a change order, uh, I mean, a, an amendment to, uh, Pacific Land Designs, uh, contract for the next council agenda, uh, to increase that by the amount of the memorial design work and to modify the Homestead Design Contract part. We received proposals from, uh, three consultants today for the design of the SR9 and John Liner-McGardel intersection. Our committee team, uh, that was selected consultant, that the mayor has selected, will begin work on that, hopefully in the next week. And if that's selected and to you, probably the first meeting in April for your approval. And, uh, other than that, internal design by David Lee on the railroad overlay. And David's been very busy. And I'll just mention to you tonight, uh, I think once again, that, uh, we have a couple of deadlines this year regarding our stormwater, uh, national pollution discharge permit. They have added a requirement for all of the agencies to provide, uh, source control monitoring. Uh, we did that about five years ago. We had an ecology grant to do a, a pilot on that. For about two years, uh, we had either a consultant or Wally Hoyt, uh, when we first started that, doing inspections of our 175 businesses in the town. Mainly looking at ones that would generate stormwater pollution. And of which, uh, gas stations and, uh, restaurants are, are prime, uh, providers of that kind. And, uh, now the state's decided that was such a good thing, they're going to require us to do it. Of course, there's no new money for that. Uh, so David's been working diligently with the other permit managers in the county. And, uh, the best approach we see for doing that right now is, uh, for the county to hire a full-time employee to do that monitoring and, and tracking work that's required, uh, by the new permit requirements. And, uh, the city, uh, and the other agencies would participate in that. That's of course going to increase our stormwater utility costs somewhat. I don't really have a firm estimate yet, but, uh, somewhere around 20% of a full-time employee. Uh, so you'll be seeing more information on that over the course of the year. We're in the process. Nikki has been reviewing a draft inter-local agreement, uh, that would implement that at some point. And, uh, that'll be coming to you at some point for your review. Other than that, um, I've been working, uh, pretty closely with John on, uh, the transportation element of the comprehensive plan, uh, updates, you know, that we'll be bringing forward to the Planning Commission on the 15th and later on to council. Now, you had a first, uh, brush at that with the, uh, agenda stuff that John, uh, brought forward through your last, last council meeting. And, uh, the final thing I'll mention to you, um, I mentioned the last time that the federal government has, uh, a new version of the old Tiger program out right now. The applications close on April the 14th. It's called the RAES program. I don't remember exactly what the acronym is. Something related to transportation. Uh, but they have quite a bit of money available under that program for both rural and urban, uh, agencies and entities, uh, that they'll be selecting for this year. The grants should be announced in August. I've been tasked with preparing a grant application for that, uh, for the Jones-John Liner Corridor project. That's the next best thing, uh, since we were not funded, uh, with the legislature this year. So I'm putting together that application now as squeezing a time in between the other things we have going on right now. And I'll be bringing to council, uh, it looks like it's going to be on, uh, April the 13th, the, the day before the application's due, uh, my memorandum proposing how we're going to fund the local match part of that. This particular grant opportunity, because we're considered rural, because we're under 200,000 population, doesn't have a match requirement, which is a good thing. Uh, the other side of that is, is it's a very competitive program. Uh, there'll be many, many agencies applying for that. The better, uh, the better applications usually have, uh, healthy match and, and a good plan. And I think we already have a good plan, and we're working on the match part. You'll be the ones who will be, uh, considering, uh, how we will fund our part of that, uh, on the 13th. I will report again on this on the 23rd of March so that you're kept fully informed as we move along. There's a lot of moving parts on it. I'm in contact with Congressman Larson's office for their support. I'm also meeting with Burlington Northern Railroad on, uh, Friday. Their structures engineer to talk about SAP road, how that's going to play into the overall project. We've got some ideas on how we might be able to reduce the project cost somewhat, uh, with that. But I'll be reviewing with them and then bringing forth with the administration. And finally, there's a, another grant program that was just advertised yesterday. Uh, it's the annual Skagit County Economic Development Grant Application. Uh, that deadline is on April the 15th. So, uh, we haven't decided how that might fit into our plans yet, but we'll be talking about that internally here. And I'm sure we'll have something in mind for those dollars as well. Uh, that's it for me. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mark. Are there any questions for Mark? Yes.
Hi, Mark. Um, I just noticed on my drive home today that there's some traffic, um, like strips around the city. Are we doing any like traffic analysis, or do you know if anyone else is doing it?
Skagit County, uh, their, their traffic division performs traffic counts for the city on an annual basis. Usually between January and March. Uh, I wasn't aware they had started yet, but that this is about the right time. Uh, we use that data, uh, in our modeling that we do. And, uh, Skagit County, uh, does the, the, uh, counts for us and provides that data to us. And then we, that's provided to the Skagit, uh, Council of Governments. They use that in their overall regional model. And we use it locally as well. So that's what you're seeing with that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Moving on to City Attorney Nikki Thompson.
Good evening. Um, so probably the item that's of most interest to you all is that we have a possession and use hearing scheduled for Friday on the. use hearing scheduled for Friday on the Nelson condemnation, so I am hopeful that the city will have possession and use of that property by Friday. Hopefully, the judge doesn't have additional questions, but I think we have all parties at the table that need to be there. There are seven-ish attorneys involved, so it's hard to imagine a situation where we don't have all parties at the table. Our office has also been working hard on a number of ordinances that you will be seeing at an upcoming meeting. We have a huge ordinance that removes all of the fees from the code so that they can be placed into a master fee schedule. I think that one is pushing 50 pages at this point. Thank you, Debbie, for that assignment. It's been fun. We also have some code changes coming down the pipe for the police department. We've got some additions to the nuisance code and then some tweaks to the civil infractions code. Otherwise, it's just very busy and legal. We have a lot to review on a daily basis, and we are definitely keeping occupied.
All right, thank you, Nikki. Are there any questions for Nikki? All right, thank you. And last but not least, John Coleman.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. So tonight, the council will be continuing their review of the 2022 docket items. That was something we talked about at length at the work session last week, so we'll be having a second read on that. And then next city council meeting will be, I'll be asking the planning, the city council to review the planning commission recommendations on the 2021 docket. So that'll be a first read on that for the two rezones that were proposed last year. The planning commission's going to be having a public hearing on Tuesday night on proposed draft amendments to the design standards that are meant to address building modifications and new buildings in the Central Business District. That's something that the city council had asked for last year, and the planning commission's been working very hard on, and so we'll have a public hearing on that, and perhaps we'll be done with it. If it's not perfect, then the planning commission will continue to work on it, though. And also, at the planning commission next week, we intend to start work on the 2022 docket. That is, of course, presuming that the council takes action tonight on the issue that we'll bring up later, the proposed items on the 2022 docket. A note of staffing, our permit tech, after little over two and a half years with the city and over 30 years total working as a permit tech, has decided to retire from permit tech and move on to another career. So we're going to have a vacancy at our front counter seat for a while until we can find somebody to fill that position. Of course, our hopes would be to find somebody with experience in that area, and so we'll start the process next week on that. And finally, talking about, last week I talked about some of the bills in legislature. Not a whole lot's changed. Last I checked, the middle housing bill is in fact dead. I'm hearing some bubbling up that the various parts of that middle housing bill are popping up in other bills that have made their way through the legislature, and I don't know if those zombie portions are going to make it anywhere, but it sounds like they're more optional things anyways. But that is your legislative update. We'll know a lot more in the next week, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Are there any questions for John? Okay, hearing none. We will move on to council reports. I'll start with you, Councilman Owen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have a lot. I'm just, I'm just happy to be back on the council in person, and I see a good sidekick here. I'm glad to see you, and I'm glad to see all of you, some of the newer ones, like Sarah, and I met the other gentleman, but I've been around long enough to get to know you, but I'm happy to be here, and I'm sure we'll get acquainted down the line. I thank you so much, and thank you, Becky. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Chuck, and it is good to have you back. Councilman McGoffin.
Hi, thank you. Welcome back to Chuck, and I have no other items.
Thank you. Councilwoman Damon.
Good evening. I don't have a whole lot. I'd like to thank the Helping Hands Food Bank for their presentation tonight. That was fantastic. Thank you. I continue to get comments from constituents regarding the increase in buildings and the apartments and the high-impact developments. A lot of people very unhappy about it, so I'm just passing that along. Outside of that, just looking forward to some, removing this mask mandate and moving forward in the summer months and getting on with some of our traditions here in town and seeing people's faces, and the Lager Rodeo's going to be coming back, and really looking forward to seeing the community come together and support all that. Outside of that, just as a, just a general public service announcement, if you see something, say something. We've seen a lot of increase in car thefts and mail, you know, mail stolen off porches and bicycles and stuff like that, you know, just, just kind of some of that stuff has been going on. So if you see something, say something. If something feels uncomfortable, just be aware. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Councilman Burns.
Want to say it's good to see Councilman Owen up here again, and thank you, Rebecca, and everyone at Helping Hands Food Bank. We really appreciate everything you do for our community. It's fantastic service. I had a couple people come to me in the last week talking about speeding in the neighborhood. I think that just as it gets nicer out and people get outside, they start to notice the cars speeding past our house. I think it was Railroad and Jamison is where the two people were from that had brought that to my attention, but that's all. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilman Allen.
Totally mundane, Mayor. I'm just glad to look over at Chief Tucker, and while he's eating, I notice he moved his mask and he still has his mustache, so I'm happy for you, Lynn, and good to have you back, Chuck.
All right, thank you, Glenn. Councilwoman Kestie.
I don't have anything tonight. Thank you.
Oh, all right, thank you. And I just have a couple things. First off, if you notice on your agenda tonight, it says that the next meeting's going to be March 15th, and that is in fact incorrect. The next meeting will be the 23rd at 6:00 PM, and obviously, masks are an option. So I also want to put out that the Skagit Trail Builders are going to be working on the Pump House Trail up at Northern State, also known as Swift Center. If you would like to volunteer or want more information about it, please see the website. The SBA Disaster Assistant has completed their work here in Skagit County. We're very grateful to them for all that they have done, and we are now working with the YMCA regarding their partnership. I've been, been very excited about this. I've been talking about it for the last four years, and I'm glad it's finally coming together, and it's going to be a wonderful thing for the community. The legislative session is soon coming to a close. I'm going to try to get Senator Wagner to come in to give us a debrief. There were a lot of really interesting bills that went forward this year in the legislature, and a couple of them will impact our community, so it'd be nice to hear what he has to say about that. And I also want to thank Helping Hands Food Bank for coming once again and doing the presentation and for all the work that you're doing in our community. Sometimes we never know what we do that impacts people's lives, not just now, but in the future, so you're shaping a generation, so that's fantastic. And one last thing, Woodfest is going to be coming. Sarah mentioned the different events that are going to be happening here in Sedra Woolley. Yes, we are back. Those events actually hold our history and tell our story, so it's very exciting that we're going to be able to be celebrating them. Other than that, I don't have anything else, and we will move on to public comment. It is 6:58. Is there anyone who would like to provide public comment this evening? I don't see anybody online. The schedule is up, our agenda's up, so I don't, I can't see, but it doesn't look like there's Nvidia online, and there is nobody in attendance here who is, looks like is going to provide public comment, so it is still 6:59. I'm going to close public comment, and we're going to move right on into unfinished business. And John, we are back to you as we discuss the proposed comprehensive plan amendments, 2022 docket.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Well, I think the city council and the planning commission had an excellent discussion about this topic at a work session a week ago from today. What is, what this is proposing to put four items on the 2022 docket, which is the comprehensive plan update cycle for the year, that the planning commission will start working on post-haste if the council makes a motion to include the four items on the memo on the next page that, from what is, what is being shown on the screen, right there, yeah, those four items. So if the, if the council is, has any more questions, first of all, about these four items, that would be a great time to ask those, and otherwise, we're looking for a motion to, looking for a motion to adopt the 22, 2022 comprehensive plan docket, which includes the four proposed items listed in this proposed memo.
Okay, are there any comments or questions for John? Okay, seeing none. Is there a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilwoman Kestie, seconded by Councilwoman Burns, to adopt the 2022 comprehensive plan docket, which includes the four proposed items listed in the March 9, 2022 proposed comprehensive plan amendment memo. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign? Okay, motion carries. Moving on to new business, this is a first read. It is the American Rescue Plan Act, and Debbie, you're going to take us through this. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Good evening. I know this is something that we've been anxious to get to you, and I'm sure that you have heard about it for quite some time, and so I'm excited that, to be presenting this this evening. As you are aware, this money is tied to the COVID-19 pandemic, and the city of Sedra Woolley was awarded $3.369 million because we are what we call NEU, which is a non-entitlement city, so our monies got passed down from the state into each of ours, each of the smaller cities. So originally, there was a significant ruling, interim ruling about how these monies were to be spent, and you had to, you know, create a pretty extensive plan, and so we had been discussing quite a bit of the, of how we should be spending these monies. But finally, on June, or in January of 2022, the final ruling came down from the U.S. Treasury that allows these small cities that received under $10 million to take what would be considered like a standard deduction or a standard allowance of the full amount to be used for any governmental service. So the team got back together in January and February, and the plan before you this evening is what we have agreed to present in hopes that you would be, approve this plan as our ARPA plan moving forward. So I'm going to go to page 57, and we'll start walking through each of the proposed As I've heard many times, economic development is a strong goal of the council, and I'm sure that is probably going to come out significantly in your strategic planning session, and so we are setting aside a significant investment in economic development and tourism to get a program established for the city of Sedra Woolley. In my prior position, I established a program at the city of Snohomish, and I know this is a significant investment of dollars, and, and this type of funding program is exactly what you need to get that program up and running and to be successful so that maybe then it'll be sustainable as we move forward. So creating jobs, but making sure the jobs that are already here, stay here and grow here, that's a really critical piece of economic development, and I don't need to tell you what a gem you have as far as a city and a community for tourism, and it is a very untapped market in your community, and I look forward to that really growing for you. So that's a good investment, and we, I know Charlie is very passionate about it as well, so I'm excited to see what happens there. I will move on. Is there any, do you want to stop there? Is there any questions on that, or do you want me to just go through the whole plan, and then we'll do Q and A? Sound of, nodding heads, good. Moving on to public safety support, an investment for the police in their Motorola radio upgrade. I know that this was something that was, is desperately needed, was desperately needed, and we ordered them ahead of time because we were really at a crisis mode not too many months ago where our radios were not functioning properly, so these, these radios, I believe, have been put into service. So we'll have to find another funding source if you decide this isn't the appropriate, but this is exactly, you know, public safety is one of the major parts for this, so again, it's a critical communication thing. And then our precious fire department. Obviously, you've heard it, I mean, there are significant needs in our fire department. Unfortunately, the major part of those needs are staffing, and staffing is an ongoing cost, and we really made it a priority that these funds be used for one-time projects that we can do and get done, and that we don't need to worry about trying to make sustainable in the future. So unfortunately, the staffing part, we just couldn't see the, we couldn't quite get there with using these funds for staffing, but we are doing some support in order to try and recruit staff. We are offering scholarships to our staffs, and then, as Chief has already shared, we're going to be doing our own academies as well, so these are good investments in that. Two big things, the COVID money is to get people outside and get people active, and we've had these two prime park projects available to us, and these projects are very difficult to get funding for any other way. I mean, really, it is, it's a big challenge to get park construction monies, and we have been successful in the past on, on other projects, but we really want to get, especially Memorial Park, we want to get Memorial Park completed, and so while I do say here that this does not include the splash pad, Mark did clarify this morning that he is hopeful, you know, that we may be able to go ahead and even include the splash pad with, with the funds that we are suggesting we invest in that project, so that would be exciting for the, for the children and the, and the adults in our community. Those are fun places to be. And then the $850,000 is to support the finalizing of the Olmsted Park project as well, so potentially, we may be getting some federal money. We have heard rumblings that we may have an ear, some monies coming through from the federal government, and so if that's the case, then we would reduce this budget, but this money would enable us to get through and support that construction plan. And then there's general operating expenses. Because of COVID, the backlog for our prosecution was significant, and so, as you know, we've hired a new prosecuting firm, and so in order to get the backlog caught up due to COVID, we are going to ask that $50,000 of these funds be, be invested in that. Again, one, those would be one-time investments, and then we would be caught up in timely. No money comes without compliance and extra work. The type of audit that we are going to have to have for the next couple of years due to the amount of monies that we have received from federal grants, it's called a single audit, is a significant amount of more work, and then the state auditors do charge us a significant higher price for our audits, so that's what the $40,000 there is to cover that, that audit and to make sure that we're in compliance. We're continuing with our technology upgrades. We have some, you know, projects in this room to, just to, we are going to continue hybrid meetings. It's going to be a requirement from the state, and so we just want to make it as easy as possible to allow our residents and our community and others that want to see the good work we're doing to be able to participate, so we'll be doing some of that, upgrading some equipment internally, some things the staff have and things like that, so. And then one of the big key pieces is that we're still kind of unknown what's going to happen. What is the impact going to be? And so we're kind of unknown what's going to happen. What is the impact going to be? And so we're being cautious. And we're actually going to save some of that money for future government services, just because there's some things happening in our, in our world today. And we're very concerned about the economic impact of those items. And so we're asking, we're including those in here as well. So. So that's the allocation plan that staff has, Mayor and staff are presenting this evening. And so I, tonight, we're just discussing it. And then I will be bringing it back for approval at the next council meeting.
All right. Are there any questions or comments for Debbie?
Madam Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead. Councilwoman Kestie?
Okay, two questions. Number one, would any of this money be able to be put into, like, I know this is silly, but gas cards for the police and fire, so that they don't have to eat up all their budget with the high price in gas? And two, could you explain a little bit more about the $220,000 for, what exactly does that development plan look like? Is that for someone to come in and tell us what they think would be great, and that costs $220,000? Or could you explain a little bit about that, please?
Sure. Related to the gas cards, of course, that is a government service, but that is an operating expense. And I think that's something that we should probably figure out how to pay for with our own, our own budget, own operating budget. But it should, the council decide that that's something they want to do, we could definitely set aside some of, some of this money. And that's kind of what that, the additional for future government services is, because those are the kinds of unknowns that we just don't, we just don't know right now what the impact is going to be. So we could definitely do that. Related to your, the Economic and Tourism Development Program, so the, in order to implement an economic development program, there is a lot of outreach that needs to be done to the community. And so we'd, we would be doing some surveying of the community. We need to meet with our businesses. One of the key pieces is to get out there and meet with each of the businesses to better understand exactly what they need. You know, a lot of times, you're going to hear about their workforce needs. So then we've got to get some training in here to try and get people trained up, or get the colleges that are currently doing training elsewhere to offer programs that support the needs of our businesses. And we also have to work on marketing our community. One of the big pieces is we've got to tell our story. I think that you guys are a hidden gem. I think I've said it many times, and you really need to get out there and you need to tell your story. So there would be a whole marketing plan to market the city of Cedar Woolley to businesses and, and the specific types of businesses. So then there's a lot of, you know, and then putting it all together and implementing it. So if you need to have somebody in, in your, in the city that businesses know to go to when they're having a struggle or have some needs from the city, that is really neutral party. So it's not the planning department or the, you know, or the mayor or the city. So it's very neutral and very supportive of the businesses in the community. So yes, there would be a plan that would be developed, specifically kind of call out what types of businesses that you want to have in your community, what fits. Then there's also typically what you would do is a leakage study. So what, what monies are not staying in the community that should stay in the community. And then you know what types of businesses you want to be recruiting to your community. So there's a, there's, there's a lot of pieces and parts to an economic development project.
Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Burns?
Glad to hear about the Economic and Tourism Development Program. A statement for Chief Tucker. I looked at the radios you guys got. I'm glad to see that you picked up some quality equipment. Good to see that they're weatherproof and connect to the body cameras in case of emergency. That's spectacular.
One of the big things, if I can just interject there real quick, is we're all going to go encrypted in the next year or two across the county. And we're playing catch-up. And another, I guess, function of those radios is that eventually they'll be able to be programmed over the air through dispatch, through the radiotech over there. And that was one of the goals, is to have that. So yeah, we, we, they weren't cheap, but they last us 10 to 12 years. And they take a beating, too. So we got to, we got to, there's only really one option to go, is to go with those. And they should last us a good long time. But, yep.
Yeah. No, I'm a ham radio operator. So I understood the specs and was happy to see you got something good that'll last you. And then I was curious for Chief Wagner, if the scholarships, is there going to be any stipulation on that? They have to stick around for more than five minutes?
Yeah, the, the stipulation is going to be those are, are trying to drive those resident positions to get some of these folks that have been sitting at home on Zoom in Mom and Dad's basement in Idaho and, and doing the Skagit Valley College program here that offers an amazing fire sciences degree. And if we can draw some of those folks in over here now that they're in person, have them live here for a couple of years while they're getting that, that scholarship, we can get some, some quality shifts out of them, get some of those shifts that we're unable to cover right now, that the burden's going on some of these folks that are doing double and triple time duty right now. So the win-win would, would, would be filling those, those bedrooms up there at Station 2 and here at Station 1. And the idea is they will be reimbursed at the end of each quarter. And there's a minimum amount of shifts they're going to cover to fulfill those needs. So we, we have it all depict out, or placed out on a form that they're going to agree to and sign, and they'll put in for reimbursement at the end of each quarter.
Spectacular. I hope that's successful. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? Yes, McGuffin?
Hi. Thank you. I just have a couple of quick questions. The first one is, with the Economic and Tourism Development Program, would that work in conjunction with the Chamber of Commerce? Would that kind of overlap on any of their work? How would that function?
Yeah, it would collab, it would be collaborative with the Chamber of Commerce. It would definitely have a different, maybe mission than, definitely a different mission than the Chamber of Commerce. But it, but we would definitely collaborate with the Chamber of Commerce.
Okay, thank you. And the second question is, and I'm not sure of the legality, so maybe Nikki can help on this one. But would an acceptable use of these funds be like a one-time bonus to the first responders that, you know, were out every day during COVID, helping the community? Would that be like acceptable to do that one time as a thank you and for their service?
So we have to be careful with gift of public funds for the state of Washington. And so it's difficult to look back and do something from the past. But if you wanted to set up a program looking forward, and you approved it and stuff, they, they are allowing those types of programs. So, but not going back and saying, and doing something in the past for the past work. For future work, yes.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilman Owen?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I got one question for Chief Turkler. Is this gas increase going to affect the senior security patrol?
No, not really. They, they don't put that many miles on, and they drive kind of slow. So, but they do drive one of our old gas hogs. So, you know, it's kind of a balance. But no, they're going to still be out doing their thing and all that. So it'll work out just fine. And it really isn't, excuse me, it really isn't going to change a lot of what we do either. It's just going to cost more. We got more cars on the road we get. And they're about as fuel efficient as they can get and as cop cars get. And, you know, it's just going to be an additional cost. And when you talk about the big scheme of things, last year, I think we had $42,000 budgeted for fuel. And we ended up spending about 47 to 48. And a lot of that came at the tail end of the year. Right now, we're already at about, we've got 47 budgeted for this year. And we're already at almost, I think, almost 10 grand. So we're, we're a little ahead. But I'm just, you know, thinking the worst whenever we keep hearing $5 or $6 a gallon of fuel, and everybody's going to take the bite. Those of us that drive great big pickup trucks, yeah, we're going to take a beating, too. But it won't affect your senior crime watch folks.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Yes, Councilman Allen?
Debbie, just real quick, you were talking about the Economic and Development Fund, probably a little beyond a lot of what the chamber does. Would you be working with, like, groups like E-DASK or something, probably?
Absolutely. We would partner with E-DASK to market ourselves. So, you know, we would participate in trade shows and things like that with them. So, yep, they would be a definite partner.
Anything else? Okay, so this is the first read, and it will come back to you on the 23rd. We will move on to the last item for tonight, and that is the First Amendment to the Annexation Agreement between Dukes Hill LLC and the city of Cedar Woolley. And Mr. Freiberger, I see you are taking this one.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to share a screen and put a slide up that'll help with the, help with the discussion tonight. Just bear with me just a second. Okay. Is council seeing a picture of some fancy colors and things like that on it, on your screens or on the board? Thank you. So in 2002, the city entered into a annexation agreement with a number of parties acting as Dukes Hill LLC. That resulted in the development of the area there on the east side of Dukes Hill, over in the Frutdale area. And Portobello Road was built as part of that. Subdivisions north and south of Portobello began at that time and developed. In the annexation agreement were some provisions that actually prevented the completion of parts of the ownership of Dukes Hill on the other side of the ridge. And among those were a requirement that the Dukes Hill would furnish right-of-way to the western extent of their property and eventually build a roadway, Portobello, to that, that limit. And as well, there was a provision in the annexation agreement that they would provide or convey or provide for conveyance of right-of-way to Highway 9 to allow for completion of the roadway, to provide basically a minor collector, a major collector from SR9 all the way to Frutdale. And it's been a requirement pretty much of that development, that that moved forward in some manner prior to development of the rest of the parcels. Dukes Hill's been working for years to first complete the additional, the original parts of that. And the last of those homes basically were built in 2021. And so they're ready to move on with the rest of this. And they have been attempting over the years to acquire property between their eastern, western boundary and Highway 9, and have been unsuccessful in, in that endeavor. This map that's before you tonight, sorry, it's sideways, north is actually to the right on that. Highway 9 runs along this top edge of the drawing there. Fire Station 2, just to locate that in the real world, is located at this point. This is Alderwood, an older subdivision that was built many years ago. And the portion down below that's within the orange boundary, that is the proposed Dukes Hill Platte. That is the subject of all of this discussion. And the property that is between them and Highway 9 is about 1,000 foot wide strip in this vicinity that I'm running my cursor right now. So one of the other necessities for actually occupying the subdivision that's proposed also was to provide public safety access from Highway 9 to Portobello Street. That was a longstanding requirement by the fire department that before anything else was built in the subdivision, there was a way to access both the existing developments on Portobello and this future one from Highway 9. And that especially is important since Fire Station 2 was built here about seven or eight years ago. And so the other purpose of the Portobello extension was to provide a direct connection to Fire Station 2. With the inability of the developer to acquire the property between their western boundary and Fire Station 2, they've been looking at other alternatives to do, at least provide the, these public safety access. And what they were able to do is acquire a narrower strip of property between their western boundary and SR9. And then they've come up with a number of different plans on how to connect the roads. They've looked at extending Portobello up across their parcel and tying it up there. And they've looked at local access roads like you see here. The city's comprehensive plan, among other projects, since 2016, has included the extension of Portobello as a, as one of our transportation priority projects. It has always been contingent on the completion of the development up here. We were assuming that the roadway right-of-way would be provided as the annexation agreement included, and that the developers would end up building the roadway as well. But we do show that in our comprehensive plan. And we do show it roughly in this line that you see in red here, basically picking up from the end of the existing roadway, which is at the lower part of the page here. The roadway is basically completed to just, just to the east of the power lines up at the crest of Dukes Hill, but completing the roadway all the way across the rest of the platte. So we've been discussing this with Dukes Hill, and a fair amount of back and forth on this. And what they have proposed to do, since they have the property accessing Highway 9 now, was to build a roadway there to provide that public safety access for the new subdivision. That will meet the requirement for, for public safety. I talked that over with Chief Wagner, and he's satisfied that with that in the short term. What they're also proposing to do is to build the rest of the roadway improvements across the right-of-way that they've already dedicated to the western boundary. This right-of-way already is in, in the city's name. Then, in exchange for putting all that together, we would relieve them in the annexation agreement by this addendum that's proposed, from the responsibility of requiring the additional right-of-way to get to Highway 9. City Attorney Nikki Thompson prepared the draft annexation agreement. We've talked about this extensively and, and have agreed that it's, that's not a practical thing to expect that the developer here would have the, have the means to acquire the right-of-way just where we want it, as it's shown in the red line there. And so this is a reasonable compromise, we believe, staff and the city attorney, and I'll let her speak to that if she chooses to, to do this, to relieve them of the responsibility to acquire that additional right-of-way, and leave that up for future development of the open land that is between their property and, and Highway 9. One other nuance on this is, in many instances, on roads that are shown in our transportation plan, they would be eligible for transportation impact fee credits. In negotiating the value of that right-of-way requirement, we made the stipulation that impact fee credits would not be subject, would not be given for the actual construction of the roadway across their parcel. There's still about 1,000 feet of roadway yet to be built. This is a rather preliminary look at how they're proposing to develop their lots. It's subject to change, but it's, it's an idea how this would look in, in its completed form. I neglected to mention, but Devin Caines is actually on, on the meeting tonight. And so if you actually have any questions, I'm sure she'd be glad to try to address those. But again, this is very preliminary right now. And the purpose tonight is to just bring, give before you this amendment to the annexation agreement. We are requesting action tonight, if you're comfortable with that. I have talked about this with most of you or all of you. And we would like to move forward with this. It's been languishing somewhat for a couple of months, mostly because I've been pretty busy with other matters. But we have got it now in a format that we think it's acceptable and, and is a win-win for both the developer and for the city. So we would ask your consideration of that tonight. And Nikki, would you care to add anything to that discussion?
No, thank you, Mark.
Okay, thank you. So do you have any questions on this?
Yeah, are there any questions for my, yes, go ahead, Councilwoman Kestie?
I got one question, Madam Mayor. Yeah, Mark, I was going to ask you, does that road run through the city park property?
The the erstwhile city park that's under a power line, if that's what you're referring to, Chuck, is in this area where it's shown in green. It does pass through the power line on an existing easement under the power lines here. This this would be Portobello coming across. I can show you also, if you're interested, an aerial map. Let me just stop this screen share and start another one. And find. Oh, my map disappeared. I apologize. Just a second, I'll bring that up for you. Okay, so can you see an aerial photo now?
No, we don't. We see your screen, but not the aerial.
Try that once again. Oh, here it is. Okay, how about now?
That's that's great. There it is.
Okay, so this will probably give you a little better picture of what the existing conditions are. This is Frutdale Road coming to the north from Highway Twenty. This is Portobello Avenue. The power lines I was just speaking about run here. This is what's called Power Line Park, and the roadway runs just south of that. The right of way that the city owns now or has been dedicated now runs to this this boundary. This is the boundary of the Dukes Hill property that's under consideration for development. This is the intervening thousand feet that's owned by other parties. There's actually multiple parties involved in that. That's part of the reason they've had such difficulty with this. This is our Fire Station Two. So our comprehensive plan envisions Portobello extending basically across the right of way that's already been dedicated and then swinging up and tying into the driveway at Fire Station Two. And that's eventually what we see happening here. The plan that I showed you earlier showed a separate road that comes up through this this parcel and comes out along this line here and ties in with a stop control intersection that at Highway Nine.
Well, you know, and I know that there'll never be a park there. I was just wondering if they had to get a right away from the city. And we've talked about this road for quite a few years now, and and I've been hoping that that road would would continue all the way through, and it would take some traffic off a trail road in Macargill. So I'm all for the road. I was just kind of disappointed that it's not going all the way through now.
Yeah, it it gets us a good part of the way there, though it adds another thousand feet. And so we actually had a developer that had placed earnest money on the property here. They had tied up all all of the ownerships, but it fell through. There are a lot of wetlands in this property, which will make it a little bit challenging to develop that. But in the in the short term, we can get the roadway built to the limit of this property, the Dukes Hill property, and and have the public safety access to Portobello that that is necessary for this development to go ahead. And Jo Ellen, you had a question?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. So are you, I was under the understanding that the road that would be done would take it all the way to Highway Nine. Are you saying it's not going to go that way?
No, there will be a roadway built from Highway Nine. This was the one I was pointing out on the other map, and I can go back there. But it basically would tie in and come down through this parcel and tie into Portobello. So it would be connected with the with the completion of the platte requirements for this development. There would be a local access road providing public safety access for whatever period of time it's necessary before Portobello is actually completed.
Perfect, thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? Yes, Councilman McGoffin.
I just would like to recuse myself from discussion and voting on this.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Yes, Councilman Allen, yes.
I was just looking at some of the data. It's been a twenty year process, and I don't know if it's the city dragging it or the developers. I did recognize some of the owners' names, and they're like me, we're all twenty years older now. So and, you know, I I think it's if we have the city attorney that finds it to pass the test, and I think if Mark does and John does, I I think it might be prudent for us to go proceed with this particular item. So that's my two cents for it.
All right, thank you. Any other comments, questions? So hearing none, Mr. Freiberger is looking for a motion tonight, and it is a motion to approve the First Amendment to the Annexation Agreement between Dukes Hill LLC and the City of Cedar Woolley. Do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion for the First Amendment Annexation Agreement between Dukes Hill LLC and the city.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Madam Mayor, I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion by Councilman Burns, and we actually had a second by both Councilman Owen and Allen. So any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Okay, good. All right, Mr. Freiberger, it looks like you can move forward with this. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, counsel.
So that is it. I want to point out the building permits and planning permits review status. I think that that's always interesting, and it gives you an idea of actually what's happening within the city. And also the monthly fire department data, I've always found that helpful because you the calls have increased, and I think it's important for you to see just where we're at as far as the status goes and why it's so important for us to bring on personnel within the fire department. If there is anything for the good of the order? All right, then next meeting will be March twenty third, not the fifteenth, and at six P M. So masks will be optional. It's up to you. Whatever makes you feel safe, that's that's what we want you to do. And with that, we are adjourned.
Night, everybody.
Good night, sir.
Hey, good night. Good to see you back. Are you excited to get back to normal?
Oh, yeah.
Yep. Get all the logger rodeos up? You're gonna do all the logger rodeos?